Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Meeting. In attendance today, we have President Nick Mosby and members of the committee, myself, I have Councilman Burnett from the 8th District, I have Councilman Cohen from the 1st District, I see Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos from the 14th District. I do not see any other council members in the hearing. If you're here and I haven't mentioned your name, please speak up. On to members from the Office of the President. Do we have Nikki Thompson on the line? It looks like Nikki needs to be elevated. Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stegman. And Aaron DeGrefin-Reed. And representing the Mayor's Office, do we have Natasha Mihou. And Nina Themelis. Okay, it looks like a couple of folks are running late. I do know that Natasha will be on for a bit.
Mr. Chair, I'm on the call.
Ah, Councilwoman Porter, thank you.
Thank you for having me elevated.
Thank you. So this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0024, Minority and Women's Business Utilization Emergencies, for the purpose of clarifying the mayor's, excuse me, for the purpose of clarifying the city's minority business and women's business contract utilization requirements for certain emergency procurements, requiring that after an emergency procurement, the agency submit a report to the Board of Estimates and the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to greater transparency and utilization of minority and women's businesses in city emergency contracting. This bill was presented on January 25, 2021. It was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'm going to open the floor to the sponsor, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues and agency staff. So this bill is actually a reintroduction of legislation we put in the last term, seeking to essentially provide more opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses in the city of Baltimore during a declared state of emergency. So the scope applies when there's a state of emergency declared, and it still, the goal is to basically ensure that even though we know that agencies need to move expeditiously to order things like PPE and cleaning supplies and other tools to keep the city operational, in this particular emergency or in other emergencies, it may be roadway issues or natural disasters, anything that is impacting the citizens of Baltimore. Regardless of that, we still want to make sure that our minority and women-owned businesses have a fair shake, have a great opportunity to get business with the city of Baltimore during that process, and so that we are operating with a equity lens, one of which I know everybody on this council wants to see the city do, and I know that our agencies want to take on as well. So that's the gist of it, Mr. Chair. I'll take a step back and we can jump into the agency reports, but that's the gist of it.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. Please speak up once I call upon the agency. First, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. We would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Next, we've got the BDC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Stephanie Seaw, representing the Baltimore Development Corporation. We submitted a response saying that we support this bill and we stand by our response.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we've got the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Chief Clark. We stand by our response. We have no objections to this bill.
Next, we have the City Administrator, and I do not believe Chris Shorter is on the call, but do we have a representative from the Mayor's Office that can?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The city administrator was unable to attend, but they do stand by their report, which is favorable with an amendment. The proposed amendment should have been shared with the committee staff in advance of the hearing. It basically just is requesting an extension of the deadline for the report that is due, extending that timeline from 30 up to 45
Thank you, Nina. Next, we've got the Minority and Women-owned Business Development Office.
Yes, this is Paul Taylor, the Director, and I support, and my office supports this bill, and in particular because sometimes these procurements exceed, succeed the time period, the emergency time period, and sometimes they get extended to other contracts. And if minority businesses aren't part of it at the beginning or are not even mentioned, they don't get an opportunity to bid later on. So I think that this is a wonderful bill for minority businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Next, we have the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Chief Miller for the MBOU Office, also with the Law Department, and we are in support of this bill.
Thank you, Chief Miller. Next, we've got the Office of Employment Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Mackenzie Garvin, Chief of Staff at MOED. We are in full support of this bill and we have no objections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. And finally, we have the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the committee and the council. Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. The Finance supports the goals of this legislation. The Department recognizes the importance of advancing equity and procurement by ensuring that MBEs and WBEs are able to navigate the contracting process and that emergency procurements, which require a rapid response, do not inadvertently create disincentives or barriers to their The Department of Finance does not anticipate a fiscal impact for the city as a result of this legislation, and the Department of Finance appreciates the changes incorporated in this current legislation to address concerns raised about the prior version, which was 20-0605. So for these reasons, the Department of Finance supports Council Bill 21-0024.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, we are going to open the floor to committee members for questions. Committee members, if you have any questions, please raise your hand, either with your camera on or in the chat. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions. I guess the sponsor or maybe some of the agencies. I recognize this is an issue, and I'm glad that the councilman brought this to us and has worked with the agencies. Tell me how this works now, where there's an emergency, whether it's a water main break or something like that, and, you know, that agency now just sort of calls whoever's available, and it happens to sometimes not be minority business. And then under this bill, that there has to be more, you know, prequalification in order to get on a list to be able to get those calls? Just trying to get a sense of the process here.
I'll defer the sort of more logistical response to the MBOU staff on that, but I would note that under, I don't know that a water main break would trigger this. So this is, this would fall under more like the, we are in a declared state of emergency as, under the Mayor's Office, like the pandemic has created a state of emergency for citywide operations, and it then alters how the procurement process takes place during that scenario. I don't know that this, and maybe I'm wrong, and I'll let the agencies jump in, but I don't think this would apply for what I would, I would feel like a huge water main break is also an emergency as well for our residents, but I don't think this would, this would alter, this would fit into that umbrella. But I'll let them respond as far as like how they develop the list and work through that, because they can give you a much more technical answer than that.
This is Paul Taylor. I'm not sure I can give the most technical answer, but the way that it typically works right now is for situations like a water main break, which you mentioned, there are on-call contracts, and those on-call contracts go through a procurement process on an annual basis. As Councilman Burnett just mentioned, the types of emergencies we're talking about here are similar to when we had the computer hacking or, like the pandemic, where we have to order immediate supplies immediately. Those were the ones that would be triggered by this legislation. And one of the challenges is that because of such the urgent need for these contracts, the request went sometimes directly to a vendor and did not necessarily go through our regular channels and procurement process, and you can understand why, but we wanted to make sure, and I think Councilman's perfectly right in that making sure that we have a process that can include minority and small businesses, and in particular, because sometimes, and this was my point in my, in my response, sometimes there are, there are procurements that survive the emergency period, and when that happens, a waiver also may survive. And so now you have no opportunity for minority and small businesses to get engaged in the process. So this opens up an opportunity, and it triggers an opportunity for minority businesses to get involved in the process.
Good afternoon. This is Chief Miller with the MBOU Office, and just wanted to concur in agreement with Director Taylor. In the event that there are emergencies in the listing of what businesses are available for specific services, that does come through the Law Department's MBOU Division, and we would be the ones to provide the list. But as he shared, the type of emergencies that this bill is relative to would be similar to what we're dealing with now with the pandemic or other major crisis situations. But the qualified certified businesses that are within Baltimore City's MBE/WBE program would be provided by our office.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Yeah, thanks for that clarity. Can I follow up, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
I guess it's under the other subarticles that are referenced here in terms of the definition of emergency, so that it's clear, or you think that this is clear enough to take on exactly, you know, what we're talking about here? Because again, as I read it, I said, oh, a water main break. But I'm just wondering, I mean, I think it's fine if you all don't think we need a clarity. It doesn't sound like it.
I worked on that in tandem with former staff from the agency. I mean, I'll let the folks, the current staff weigh in if they feel like additional clarity is there. But, but yeah, it was something that I worked in tandem with staff last term on that one. So I feel like it's good, but I also don't work there day to day. So, yeah, I'll let them weigh in on that one.
From the Law Department, obviously you think you've already approved it for a lot of course.
But it looks like Mara responded in the chat. I'm trying to pull it up. Mara from Finance. I missed it.
And this is Hillary from the Law Department. I mean, this would happen anytime the Board of Estimates declares something that sort of blesses something as having been an emergency. So if that, that helps at all, I mean, unfortunately, water main breaks are routine enough that we have a contractor available in a requirements contract if and when there's a break, and that's, and that's already bid out. These are for sort of more unforeseen emergencies. I don't know if that goes a little bit more to your question or not.
If I could add to, this is Mara James from the Department of Finance to what you just said, but on, in 28-51 for emergencies, it cites the article in the Charter that defines what an emergency procurement is. And so that definition is pretty specific and clear, and talks about the role of the Director of Finance in issuing that it's emergency procurement.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if that Article 4 language was what was going to help us with the definition of what emergency we're talking about. Okay, that's fine. Thanks a lot.
And Councilwoman, this is Hillary again. It's, it's basically an emergency because you would be hindered if you waited to procure. So anything that would hinder your, it's basically sort of defines itself in that way. It's not, there's a type of emergency. The one that comes to mind that wasn't the pandemic for me was when the, sort of the street collapsed next to the CSX train area. You know, you needed to excavate that immediately to prevent further damage, and you couldn't do the normal procurement process. And we didn't, you know, we didn't necessarily have the contractor we needed already. So, you know, normally that happens, and then after the fact that, you know, Finance, you know, the Director of Finance certifies, yep, this is definitely an emergency, that kind of thing. So maybe that gives you some more context.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I understand now. I just wanted to make sure it was very clear in the bill what we were talking about. And it sounds like from Ms. James' testimony that that Article 6 in the Charter that's referenced here would do that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. I want to follow up with your, with your question. It would really help me a lot if someone could walk me through an example of the process as it stands now, if we could even use the pandemic as an example. Pandemic happens, what happens next if we hear something?
Okay, this is Henry, excuse me, this is Henry Raymond. So as it relates to the pandemic, the Governor and the Mayor declared states of emergency. Agencies needed specific commodities, goods, and services such as PPE, cleaning disinfectant, foods for citizens, neighborhoods, et cetera. Because of an emergency of this nature, public welfare could be adversely affected. When the public welfare could be adversely affected, the Director of Finance has the Charter authority to declare an emergency. So let's say that the Health Department needed PPE. The Health Department would submit a request to the Director of Finance for the procurement of the PPE. Now, we're using PPE as an example, but it could be any type of commodity, good, or service. And stating the justification, what is the public welfare that would be at risk? I would then, as Finance Director, would approve that request. That legally allows the agency working with procurement to immediately procure that commodity, good, or service. And then we report that transaction in a reasonable timeframe to the Board of Estimates. Now, what this bill would allow is that when the emergency is declared, that the agency would work with the MBOU Office, work with procurement, to try to identify MBEs and WBEs that might be able to participate in that procurement. So I was using the example PPE. So we're talking gloves, gowns, masks, things of that nature. So the emergency's declared, we need $50,000 worth of gloves. The department would coordinate through MBE, the MBOU Office, and the Bureau of Procurement to determine, are there any MBE/WBEs that could provide the gloves, or whatever that commodity, good, or service might be? If the answer's yes, then the agency would make every effort to contract with that MBE or WBE to ensure that they had the opportunity for a portion of that procurement emergency. So in a nutshell, that's how the process works. Now, once the vendors are identified, so let's say there were a couple of MBE/WBEs that could participate, they would be given a contract, and the contract would be executed immediately, and we would, the city would then take possession of the commodities or the goods, or have the service provided, and then the vendors, the vendors would be paid. So I hope that that's a good overview of the process for this illustration.
Thank you, Director Raymond. That was really, really helpful.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions from folks on the committee? Councilwoman Ramos?
To the sponsor of the amendment that was proposed by Finance, I think, adding to the timeframe, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not ideal. I would like to keep it a shorter window, but I do understand, we talked about this in the last version of this, around some of the challenges with getting the information prepared after it's coming through Board of Estimates and multiple agencies. So I do want to be, you know, a little more understanding of the workload that they're going to be doing, especially during an emergency, emergency process. So I'm okay with it. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Thanks.
Any other questions from folks on the committee or any other council members that may have entered the meeting? Seeing no, we'll move on to public testimony. So now the committee will take public testimony. We're putting up instructions now, so the committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. It's located on the bottom right. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by one, by the host, one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony, and if the speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back to provide their testimony in the chat function. With I do not see any hands raised. Once again, please use the raise hand function on the Seeing no public testimony, we are going to move on to the amendments. I'd like to, once more, have the opportunity, I know there is one amendment on the floor. If we can just have that amendment explained thoroughly one more time, either by the Mayor's Office or the sponsor.
Mara, do you mind jumping in? This is something that I know we talked about in the last iteration of this, or anyone from Finance, Director Raymond?
This is not Finance, and then that actually comes over.
Looks like it's CAA.
The City Administrator's Office.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. If, so the request was basically just to increase the number of days from 30 to 45 to allow for the report to be completed in a timely fashion, especially since the start date that triggers the day one is from the execution of the contract, which is when the contract is signed. We just wanted to make sure that there was enough time provided to, to the office in order to provide, for the contracting agencies to provide the report.
Excellent. Thank you, Nina. Any questions from folks on the committee on that amendment? Is there a motion to move the amendment?
Chair, I moved it in.
Councilmember Burnett, and seconded by Ramos. So roll call. Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello? Costello's absent. Glover?
Costello's present.
Oh, Costello is present. Thank you, Councilman Costello. We are voting on the amendment to extend the consideration from 30 days to 45 days.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Councilman Glover? Absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
All right, so this, the amendment passes for, with four yeses. Finally, we move on to the bill. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable with the amendments?
It's moved.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. Roll call. Conway, yes? Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover, absent. Porter, absent. And Ramos?
Yes.
Thank you. So this will move on to Second Reader with a vote of four ayes. Next, we'll move on to Bill 21-0030, Coordinated Multi-Agency Code Inspections, for the purpose of requiring that the city administrator coordinate a multi-agency code inspection after a commercial property has been issued certain environmental citations, requiring that the city administrator and the Department of Housing and Community Development receive a copy of all environmental citations issued, specifying which agencies will be included in the multi-agency inspection team, requiring that the city administrator provide certain information to council members, requiring the city administrator submit an annual report detailing the work of the multi-agency inspection team, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 25, 2021, and the sponsor is Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'm going to open the floor to comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So the impetus for this legislation was, one, just sort of experience in working with community leaders, with agencies around a multitude of concerns with primarily my district. This would probably be more of a corner store challenge and gas station, but obviously, you know, with, with all of us, we have nuisance commercial properties in our districts that often require a multi-agency response or multiple agencies to respond to the concerns. And I'll give an example. I have a store in my district that, the reoccurring issue was bags of trash being stored next to the entrance, like 15, 20. I'm happy to send photos, but I'm sure you have seen these kind of things in the city, in our city. And, you know, upon going into the business, I would notice that there were, you know, boarded up windows or covered windows. There was knives on display, which was an ordinance that we passed, banning the, the display of those a few years back. There was issues with like the food and food storage, and so it required me to contact the Health Department, contact code enforcement, get special investigations out to go through the trash. And so, you know, that was, it's one example, but, you know, when we do these like multi-agency walks, we see that they're pretty effective, and that's been sort of formalized through the Social Club Task Force that operates in many parts of the city, where you do see a, you know, the liquor board, Police Department, Code Enforcement, Health Department, Fire Department, all working in tandem to address commercial facilities that may have a number to address commercial facilities that may have a number of different challenges at once. So this is basically trying to formalize that into a process that targets nuisance commercial properties. I do want to note that for this one, Mr. Chair and colleagues, I am not asking to vote this out today. There were some legitimate concerns raised about the scope of what I'm proposing from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Health Department, Environmental Control Board, and the city administrator's office, and maybe more. So I am looking forward to working with all of these agencies who are, seem generally supportive of what we're trying to do, but have legitimate concerns about the scale and scope of what's being proposed. So you all did receive one amendment today. I don't want to move any of the amendments or anything just yet. I do want to have an opportunity for us to ask questions to the agencies to get a better understanding of what the challenges are. And my intention is to have one or more work sessions on this and obviously several follow-up meetings to come to a consensus with the staff so that we can execute something like this, but have a narrowed and, and a narrowed scope and focus that really does go after the nuisance repeat offenders that deserve a multi-agency response in order to solve their challenges or help solve the challenges. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Now the committee will hear from the agency representatives, and we're going to start off with the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works for the purposes of this hearing. We submitted a report to the committee stating our concern that to include us in an multi-agency group that are, the focus of which is issuing citations would be inappropriate for DPW. We do not have any enforcement powers regarding violations of the code. We have no personnel in which to do it, and that is the basis for our requesting to be amended out of the bill. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marsha. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who was having some trouble getting onto the meeting.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Next, we've got the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Vic Trivola from the City Law Department. The Law Department is prepared to approve the bill as drafted for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Victor. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. This is Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our bill report. We currently oppose the bill as written. Based on conversations with the impacted agencies, we expect there to be an increased annual operating cost of approximately $715,000. This is based on an estimate of citations issued from the Department of Housing and Community Development. They noted that in 2019, they issued about 13,000, nearly 14,000 citations, and approximately 816 of those would fall under this legislation and require a multi-agency response. This would be a large increase in workload for all agencies involved, especially those that issue a lot lower amount of citations or are not involved in citations such as DPW. Just to note, we laid out our estimate in our bill report, but it includes anticipated personnel costs of approximately $652,000 for seven new inspectors across three agencies and one new attorney in DHCD, as well as approximately $50,000 for vehicle costs for the inspectors and $11,000 for other program costs such as technology. You know, as I've spoken in other hearings, the city is facing major fiscal concerns and cannot at this time support implementation of new programs with general fund dollars without pooling resources from other services. We do want to recognize, however, though, that there may be increased revenue from additional citations from implementation of this bill, but we're not able to provide a projection at this time since there are different citation penalty amounts. And we, considering the complications of the hearing and appeals process, we wouldn't be able to say how many citations would be upheld and how many, how much revenue would we receive from that. In general, though, we are supportive of the intent of this legislation to encourage coordination across agencies and appreciate the work that our partner agencies already do to coordinate. We just believe that this legislation, as drafted, would result in drastic workload increases and require a large investment of time and resources. I'm happy to answer any questions about our cost analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here today by Eric Booker, Deputy Commissioner of Housing Code Enforcement and Emergency Operations, as well as Jason Hessler, Deputy Commissioner for Permits and Litigation. DHCD is committed to the cleanliness and appropriate maintenance of all property in the city of Baltimore, Baltimore, in order to promote the health and safety of our communities. However, we do have significant operational and fiscal concerns around the implementation of this legislation. Agencies currently coordinate on a reoccurring and on a as-needed basis, depending on the type of complaint that is reported. For instance, you've heard other men, others mention the Social Club Task Force, which is comprised of the members of the police department, fire, health, liquor board, and DHCD Special Investigations. They go out nearly every weekend, late into the evening, to monitor businesses' compliance with local laws. In addition, DHCD Special Investigations Unit also frequently coordinates with the Baltimore City Fire Department to conduct daytime business checks to ensure that the businesses are in compliance with the building and zoning code requirements. We believe that while every inspection deserves an investigation, not every complaint warrants a multi-agency follow-up inspection. Based on a review of 2019 citation data, there were 816 commercial locations cited by DHCD for violations listed in this bill, and those would trigger a mandatory additional inspection by a multi-agency task force. These inspections in general are more in-depth and labor-intensive than typical code inspections. They require research beforehand on existing violations, violation history and permitted uses, coordinating the inspections with other agencies and following up on the findings, gathering information from other agencies and coordinating the re-inspections. In addition to the operational strain this legislation would create, the agency create, we estimate the fiscal impact on the agency would be over $455,000 annually. This includes three full-time investigators, one attorney, overtime costs, vehicles and vehicle maintenance, as well as other technology equipment. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss agency activities around inspections and multi-agency collaboration with the city, but we do have concerns that these efforts might be duplicative and will add additional fiscal and operational burdens. We did just earlier send around a DLR version of an amendment that we had drafted, and it's also included in our bill report. We suggested that on page four, line three of the bill to replace the world, the word shall with may. So it reads that the city administrator may coordinate multi-agency comprehensive code inspections. This amendment would allow the city administrator and city agencies to use their best discretion to prioritize limited resources in the decision to coordinate multi-agency inspections and really focus on serial offenders and nuisance properties. We also greatly appreciate the sponsors' opportunity to work with us and other city agencies, as well as perhaps B C I T and the mayor's office of performance and innovation and the city administrator to help prioritize what particular properties require this multi-agency inspection. We appreciate the, again, the opportunity to discuss this with you, and we stand by our bill report of comment. And we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Stephanie. We're going to move on to the Environmental Control Board.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Woods. I'm the Director of the Environmental Control Board. We stand by our report. Our main concern is the placement of the bill in Article One, Section 40, which is set up for the Environmental Control Board. This agency wouldn't really have a role in the multi-agency code inspection approach because the ECB does not investigate, inspect, or issue citations, and we really shouldn't be involved in that process whatsoever. We do like to maintain and need to maintain our independence from that process so that we can offer an impartial and fair hearing opportunity for any citations issued. So the ECB would ask that a different location be found within the code for this section to be added, rather than through Article One, Section 40, because we think it will add to confusion with respondents, residents, and business owners who are already kind of unclear with the role of the different agencies as it relates to inspections, enforcement, and the hearing process. The rest of Article One, Section 40 is strictly limited to the Environmental Control Board, so adding this in as Section 15 to Article One, Section 40 doesn't really jive with the rest of Article One, Section 40, and it's not within the functions of the ECB. So we would ask that it not be added to Article One, Section 40. We're certainly not opposed to this activity, but we do think that the ECB should, should remain removed from that process.
I was muted. Thank you, Rebecca. Next, we have the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Chief Clark. I'm joined today with the Fire Marshal Chief Ready, and I would like him to speak on this particular bill. Are you there?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Chair. Baltimore City Fire, Fire Marshal's Office stands by its report. Be advised, the Fire Department uses, uses citations as a last resort. We write violations. We give individuals the opportunity to abate the situation before we have to write a citation. The only fiscal impact that will be on the Fire Department would be after hours overtime. Other than that, Fire Department stands by its report. Any questions?
Thank you. We'll take questions at the end of the agency reports. Next, we've got the Health Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DePaul Nibber, on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties here, but hopefully you're able to hear my testimony on behalf of the Health Department. So we took no position on this bill. We anticipate some significant impacts as a result of its passage in its current state. Right now, we anticipate needing at least two additional environmental health inspectors as a result of cases referred to us from housing as well as other agencies. There is a disproportionate impact for us, in fact, as a result of the way the bill is currently drafted. We would actually only be referring out about 40 different citations for coordinated review, whereas we would be getting several hundred in return. So we look forward to working with the bill sponsor and coming up with something that's amenable to all. Thank you.
Thank you, DePaul. And finally, the city administrator, I don't, I don't think administrative orders on the line, but do we have any representation from the mayor's office to speak on his behalf?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is Nina Themelis with the mayor's office. The city administrator has some concerns that were previously mentioned by the other referred agencies. They do support the intent of the legislation and are committed to working toward amendments. There are some proposed amendments in the bill report itself in reference to changing the threshold or changing the criteria that would trigger this multi-agency response, as well as the concern mentioned by the Environmental Control Board, serving as a more judicial body rather than an enforcement body. Finally, the city administrator did ask to be removed from the bill itself. I think that that additionally is something that can be discussed as we work toward amendments for the bill. But overall, the city administrator is supportive of the intent of the legislation and looks forward to further conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. With that, I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. So any questions from Councilwoman Ramos?
Yeah. Thanks to the sponsor for bringing this bill to us and for the, I understand where the agencies are coming from. I did want to say that I do think this is important because, you know, I've got a couple of properties in my district that have had, you know, legal dumping, but then I also referred it to the Health Department because I knew that they needed to actually take action. And then I referred it to somewhere else because they needed to take action. And that's a, you know, I'm happy to do it, but it would be better if it was kind of automatic. And I think that's the intent that my colleague is trying to get to here is that oftentimes some of these properties are, you know, is, there's not just one issue. There's multiple issues, and if we can just nip it in the bud that that would be, that that would be great. So I just, I just wanted to, to talk about my support for the intent of this bill because it's definitely needed. And, you know, obviously, I understand where some of the questions are, but I don't want the bill to be watered down where it's only in certain circumstances or only in, you know, I just think it's, it's important that we work through that. So whatever help the council needs, for me, I'm happy to supply that because I do think it's, I think it's important. I understand where the Environmental Control Board is coming from, obviously. And, you know, if, if the C A O is not willing to be the part of putting all this together, then who else would? So as we go through sort of the new role that the C A O is playing, you know, what does that actually look like? And is that, you know, how that, how this would work moving forward? So again, just, just sort of, you know, talking about my support for the intent of this bill and hope that we can work through it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have a question there or?
Sort of, not really.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, for your general support. We would definitely, fully intend to work with all of the agencies to come up with something that's agreeable for, and preserves the intent of the bill. The, the question I had, one was a formal request for DHCD, Mr. Chair. Could the agency, the agency indicated that there were, and I believe I heard this correctly, 816 citations issued to commercial properties in 2020. Would the agency be able to provide the committee a map of the locations? Obviously, I don't need to know how many times each one was hit, if there were repeats. But if they're just, just, I'm very much interested in the geography of that, and I'm a visual learner. So it would be helpful to have it mapped out or a link to a map if they don't want to print something out that we could, we could look at. Mr. Chair on that one. And the, the question I had for DHCD, and maybe they don't have this on hand, so this would, I guess, still fit in under a formal request for the committee. If they could provide a percentage of violations that were re-inspected within the window of time noted on the violation notice. And those were, so, and I started to share like looking up. So yeah, when you look at the violation notices, they'll say you have X 30 days, 60 days to abate the violation. I want to know what percentage of those were re-inspected by the agency within that, or I guess following the issuance of that violation notice.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that to you, Councilman, but the 30 days is, is standard. It's standard, so it may not happen within that window because we have over 30, 30,000 violations that we're re-inspecting with 70 inspectors. So that's, that's messages to the recipient, but we will, we'll get you the answer to your question. Thank you.
To contextualize why I was asking that, I do understand the finance department's concerns about the fiscal impact, but I want to also get a better picture of if we need more inspectors generally. Because the concern is for me that there, while I do know that, I understand that this needs to, you know, there may not always need to be a multi-agency response, but I do have concerns about the there may not always need to be a multi-agency response, but I do have concerns about the, not the work ethic. I think our code enforcement agencies are amazing. They work incredibly hard, so no, no shade to any of them. But I, I do have concerns about the scale of complaints relative to our ability to re-inspect and stay on top of businesses under normal operating circumstances, whether this bill is passed or not. So I, I just want to have a better idea of, of how we're doing in that front. And I don't want it to be taken as, I don't think that the agencies are doing, doing a good job. I think they do.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the bill sponsor and the agencies. This one is for Ms. Collins from DPW. So you had stated that, you know, DPW doesn't have inspectors, that, you know, that's not a function. My understanding, though, is that there used to be an enforcement wing within DPW. Correct me if I'm wrong, and if I'm wrong, just let me know. But my understanding is that we used to, DPW did use to serve that function. And if it did, I'm curious sort of about what the move was to move all inspectors toward housing, like why they no longer do. Just, just curious sort of as we move forward, why that happened?
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Again, for the committee members, this is Marsha Collins with the Department of Public Works. My underst, my recollection is that we transferred either between twenty or twenty-three positions over to H C D to their code enforcement arm back in two thousand and seven. And I think there was a desire at the time, under that administration, to consolidate that work. And obviously, H C D can speak for themselves, but my understanding is that they were all trained as full code inspectors, not just sanitation code enforcement. When we had the inspectors, we focused solely on, on code enforcement for exterior sanitation violations. A very small, much smaller portion of the code enforcement that H C D handles. And I thought they were quite successful, but it was a shift in thinking at the time. And I think that H C D probably was very happy to get additional inspectors under their wing.
Yeah, no, I have no doubt, but just wanted to establish that, like, there is a history of both agencies at one point having inspectors.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Councilman Collins? Yeah, this is Booker, D H C D. Yeah, the, the transfer happened in two thousand and seven, May fourteenth, two thousand and seven, during the Dixon administration. And while we absorbed the sanitation inspectors, because sanitation fits within the property maintenance code, we also transferred our cleaning and boarding crews over to DPW, so it was an alignment of work. You know, the boarding and the cleaning went over to DPW and the inspector team and special investigations folks came over to us.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. He is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Any, any other questions from folks on the committee before I go back?
Can I ask a quick, oh, if you want to go back around, I wait. I have a follow-up on that line of question.
Fine.
Sure. Councilman Burnett?
So, yes, related to the, the DPW inspectors, this is from, for Ms. Collins. Has there been consideration for the re-establishment of code or some, some ability to do code inspection for DPW or within DPW? The reason I'm asking, and it's, and apologies, Mr. Chair, somewhat outside the scope of this, but in line with that questioning. I, I've had situations very recently with illegal dumping where we've, you know, we, we had this process where, you know, someone calls, reports the dumping, code enforcement comes out, they mark it, they then refer a work order out to DPW, who then schedules a cleanup. For the sake of expediency or efficiency, would it make more sense to have or be able to deputize DPW to, to take on that role so that they're doing the inspection? They try and see if they can find a culprit for the dumping and doing the cleanup that same day or within a shortened window of time? Is that, has that been considered? Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was my question.
Mr. Chair, Marsha Collins, again for the Department of Public Works. Thank you. There's a, a lot of questions wrapped up in those statements, but I'll, I'll try to get to them one by one. The creation, and this goes back a number of years, the creation of the Environmental Control Board and the ability of the city to create it required action at the state assembly, general assembly level. And once that authority was made available, the city pursued and created the Environmental Control Board. And as part of creating that Environmental Control Board, they selected a series of violations under Article One, such things as, you know, things within the, and it listed specifics referencing either sections of the police ordinance, sanitation, exterior sanitation violations was one. And it was a series of violations that could be cited immediately rather than the process of, that H C D has, which is a very thorough process of going out, investigating, contacting the relevant party, telling them they have certain X amount of days in which to cure the problem, giving them the opportunity to cure the problem, going back and re-inspecting. And then if things continue on that vein, eventually ending up in housing court for these violations. So that was the genesis of the Environmental Control Board and the ability to have special enforcement officers who could go out and cite. And in our case, it was citing for exterior sanitation violations, which would be appropriate for us because we don't do interior inspections, you know, none of that. And so that was the genesis of that particular arrangement. The, the work that H C D does, and they reference this in their report, is a lot more procedural, giving people the opportunity to correct, which we like to see, we want to see. We don't want to be going in and having to correct people's sanitation problems. We like them to do it because if they do it, maybe they'll change their behavior. So that was the whole thought process. We have looked at that from time to time. It may provide some measure of efficiency for us to have citable citations and, but what we would have to do is create the positions to do that work. We can't just tack on to a person's work, for example, a supervisor who may be supervisor, a lead supervisor who's supervising, you know, trash collection team. We can't just tack on the responsibility to do sightings, for example. So you really have to create the positions as well, and I think that's what Mara James was referring to in her report. So it, it is an attractive option, but we have to be able to make it work and to have the personnel to do it. And that's when we begin looking hard at our costs because it's a general fund function. And we all know that it's being pulled in many ways, many different directions. So at this point, we rely on H C D to do some initial inspections for things like illegal dumping. Others that can just be, as we discussed this morning in the three-one-one, can be just directly sent to DPW to correct. But where there's the opportunity to get the attention of the appropriate person and encourage them through notice, and then if not, nothing happens through a citation, again, we're trying to achieve behavioral change and not rely on our crews to clean up behind everyone as if they were, you know, a thirteen-year-old in a messy bedroom, I guess is my best correlation. So we're, we're, we're all trying to attack this problem and we're straddling the issue between wanting to get fast and effective result, but also wanting to change behavior, which is, I'm sure you are well aware, takes more than just a couple of steps. I hope I've answered all your questions.
I'll follow up with you on that. I know it's not related to this bill, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I will.
Okay. All right. We'd be happy to talk to you.
I have a question, I have a question, Mr. Chair, but for some reason I have my technical difficulties. I'm not quite sure if you guys can hear me. Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Glover.
This question is to DPW. He's wondering, could we cross train agencies in order to cite, you know, what we see when we're there at the time?
If, thank you, Councilman Glover. This is again, Marsha Collins, DPW. We do encourage and we do have our supervisors, who are, for example, supervisors related to our routine services, which I'm sure you're very familiar with our operations, but those, you know, daily tasks that we do going through every neighborhood, collecting trash and recyclables, week in and week out, even during COVID. And we do encourage those supervisors, and they have been reporting problems that they see. So part of the step is reporting the problem. And I know that, you know, I can probably get information if you would be interested on how that's working and what kind of follow-up that we do regarding that. So that's kind of the first step, as we all know. So those eyes and ears that are out there and reporting it is very helpful. And that means we can be proactive for something we know we can address right away without waiting for H C D to do something. But if it's something a little more complex that requires H C D to step forward first, then we're, we're acting as, you know, a prompt for them to take those first steps.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I had, I had one quick question. I believe it's pretty much a follow-up from a question of Councilman Burnett's. Do we have, from the Finance Department, do you have any understanding of the potential savings, if any, from present, from preventing multiple visits to a particular location?
We did, this is Mara James for the Department of Finance. We did not include that in our analysis because we recognize that this would be for several of the agencies just an increased workload and based on work that they haven't done before. But we could, if, I, I don't know if we have the data to be able to do that projection because we, again, we don't know what citations would come up and if it would be actually meeting that goal. So, but I can look into that and think more.
Sure. And I, I think the other question is, it's prescient, actually, that this hearing is happening right after the closed means closed hearing just this morning in the Health, Environment and Technology Committee. This is kind of a similar issue. We have things that are transferred between agencies and we're just very inefficient when that happens. So, you know, of course, I think everybody understands this is an issue. It seems like it's a little bit more difficult to resolve. And you can work with folks to figure out how we can close the gap here. Any, any other questions from folks on the committee? Councilwoman Ramos?
Following up from earlier, I guess this question would be for the Mayor's Office, actually, it's for the C A O, but I got it here. If they want to be removed from this bill as to coordinate the agency response, then what's their alternative?
So this is Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office. I don't have a direct answer to that question from the city administrator. I know that as they are establishing the processes and procedures of the city administrator's office overall, that they're kind of trying to find solutions to existing problems. So I can provide a response to you following the hearing today concerning the intent of removing themselves from the bill and where the responsibility on that coordination.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett, please.
I forgot to ask this earlier. So can someone provide me a roster of, not necessarily the individual staffers, but what agencies are a part of the social club task force currently?
We can provide that for you, Councilman.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is the Councilwoman Felicia Porter. That was actually going to be my question, but I was going to reserve it for email. If I can find out the last, like, the frequency of those, of those social club interactions by district as well, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee or any other council members on the call? Seeing none, we'll move on to public testimony. So now the committee will take public testimony. We're going to put up the instructions once again. So committee staff will coordinate the public testimony. Please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking, and users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are muted. Attendees will hear, hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, I do not see any raised hands. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. And no questions on the phone line. I'll give another, another couple of seconds in case there are any questions. With that, we are going to go into recess. I want to thank the sponsor and the committee for talking us through. Thank you all.